I call to order the July ninth, twenty nineteen, meeting for the Slink County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick, Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Wees.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
I ask you please stand and join me in a flag slip, followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We now move to the public forum, where a portion of our meeting, where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and items that are not on today's agenda.
Norman, I'm Salina. I brought this issue up to you here a couple of weeks ago about Oliver Hagland.
Please leave it with the administrator, please.
Or you don't want to read it?
I'm not going to read it here in the open public, no, sir. We've got business here and tech. Your three minutes are running. We will read it.
Uh, well, there'll be handouts on the jail proposals at the next week's meeting on paper, so the people can read it, so we can see what you're talking about.
Sure.
And will there be an, after that, will there be another town meeting before the election? And third, on our public forum, why can't it be moved towards the end of the program, just before adjournment, so we can comment on issues that you've discussed, and you don't allow the citizens to participate?
Can't answer that.
You're the commissioner, you should have an answer.
I'm one commissioner, it takes three to get anywhere, to make a vote. So that is something that we have to take care of. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wish to speak?
I'm Laney Meyer from Salina. I really wasn't here to speak, I wanted to just kind of stay on top of what's going on. I've spoke before about the whole jail project, and our group, of course, is moving slow, but in view of the fact that you are having the architects come next week, of course, some of us will be here to listen. And I, my question is, and then we're going to meet the Friday after that. My question is, I mean, I'm really ready to put the word out to our group. Let's have a community meeting. We don't know how many people we'll draw. But at what point will we be able to know what you're going to advocate or ask for in terms of the jail situation? Originally, of course, we said, we're saying it's more than just the beds. It's about programming to help them not come back for another bed. So I'm really wanting to know when it'll be even approximate of when you'll know just what you are going to ask the voters to vote for.
You're good questions and good point, and I can't answer that for you right now. I can tell you this much, the wheels are turning pretty slowly. You will be given plenty of advance notice on the issues that you're talking about. I would say we'd be, I don't know, thirty, sixty, ninety days even down the road, wouldn't you, Andrew? As far as when we really decide, because we're going to have to listen to the architects, they're going to have to get back to us. Is it going to be nothing? Is it going to be a jail project that, renovation? Or is it a greenfield site? Those are the things that are still pretty dangling quite a ways up in the air. So we've got to come up with those answers first, and then we would proceed. And select an architect, obviously, which is going to be a process in and of itself, so.
When we get to the point where hopefully we do have some community people to listen, would one or all of you be able to come and represent yourselves? And of course, we will, our group will say what we think is important, too. Would that be a possibility when we get that far?
I would say yes. I mean, without question, we want to have the public's input. There would no doubt be more public input as we move forward. I would say in the form of a commission meeting. But, I mean, any time that, any group in Salina that wishes to contact a commissioner to come and speak to their group, were available.
Okay.
Somebody would be. I mean, as an example, on the Rotary Club or the Ambucks and so on and so forth, have asked different people within our organization to speak, and they do come and attend their meetings.
Good. More and more people I talk to and tell them what we're trying to advocate for, they say, yes, yes, yes. And they're really wanting to look broader than a bunch of new beds that just, you know, it doesn't speak to their soul and helping them heal at all.
Right. And I mean, you recognize the fact that there are a whole lot of steps in this process, and there's a whole lot more than, like you said, than beds.
Yeah. Sounds like since you've been to Hodge for one thing, that's opened some doors, maybe, to not just the money issues, but also maybe helping these people grow within and not commit again. That's kind of what I picked up, and I'm excited about that. So anyway.
All right.
I'll let my committee know what you're saying.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing then, I'll bring it back to the commission for regular business. Item number one.
Approve agenda for public forum as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda for the public forum as presented.
Second.
Then move then second that we approve today's agenda for the public forum. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion does carry. Item number two.
County engineer update, Justin Mater, county engineer.
Good morning, Mr. Mater.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Well, what you should have in front of you is an eleven by seventeen map. And what this map consists of is all work that needs to be completed this year, okay? So what's not on there is the programmed work that's been completed. You know, I tried to make this map as simple as possible, and again, with my quarter really poor, I'm trying to, you know, look forward, you know, for the rest of the year on what we need to do. So everything that's been completed is not shown on this map. So as you're probably very well aware, this has been a difficult year for road and bridge construction. You know, whether you're working on a county crew or a contractor, it's been a tough year to get some work done. And so I've got a feeling that in order to get a lot of this program completed, it's going to be a very busy end of the year for us, as we're trying to complete projects. So I'm going to go ahead and just jump into twenty eighteen work that has been contracted in twenty eighteen, but has not yet been completed yet. And that's two reinforced concrete box projects on Reese Road and Honig Road. And those are the, if you look on the map, they're on those two roads, that's the reinforced concrete boxes that need to be completed. Those are with the light blue circles on your map. And those two projects are, they're contract, we're contracting with Reese Construction to perform those projects. I was hoping to have those started by now, but just with the rain, and then with a project on Donmire Road that I'm going to talk about here in a little bit, those have pushed those back a little bit to the end of the year. Delaying those projects, those two project sites, I'm not concerned about. So I don't think it's really a big deal for that. So next, I'll just move into the twenty nineteen projects. I'll start off with our Span, Span Bridge project. We are under contract with L and M Contractors to construct a one hundred-foot reinforced concrete haunt slab on Waterwell Road between Niles and Whitmore. I talked to L and M the other day, and they've pushed that project back to an October start date. And then we're looking at, you know, around a six-month construction timeframe on that one. For the twenty nineteen reinforced concrete box projects, I have six of them, six scheduled projects that's going to be bid as a package. And those are the light blue circles on the map, as well as the, same as what I talked about on the twenty eighteen projects. Those, the plans and specifications for those projects are done. They're finished up, and what I'm waiting on is a couple landowners. I'm waiting on some temporary easements before we can move forward with those projects and get that out for bid. So I'm hoping we can have that done before the end of the month. And you're, we're probably looking at a this winter or spring of twenty twenty construction timeframe on those there. Then the other reinforced concrete box project is on Donmire Road, just north of the Smoky Hill River. And that's the project that, the existing structure was damaged with all the flooding in the area up through there. And so the Slink County contracted with Reese Construction for a hundred and five thousand, six hundred and three dollars and thirty-five cents to replace that project. And one of the requirements on that project, you know, was a very tight timeframe. They were actually scheduled to start construction yesterday. But because of all the flooding that we had last week, that's a no-go. And so we've got to wait for it to dry up. It's, for the most part, all the water's gone down there, and so we just have to give it another day or two to dry up, and hopefully Reese will get in there and get started. So the detour has been installed, and that's, I think they installed that last week, I believe it was Wednesday. So that's sitting there, you know, ready for the project to get started. And again, we're looking at about a two-month construction timeframe with this. Hopefully, a little bit less, but, you know, weather plays a pretty big role in that. Okay, next, I'll move on to our road maintenance program. I'll start off with crack seal. And if you look at the map, that is the dark blue line. So we are under contract with Payment Pros to do our crack seal this year. So far, we've done about twenty thousand dollars worth of work out of around a ninety-five, ninety-six thousand dollar contract. And so a lot of those roads were the roads that, you know, we were going to, we were going to chip seal, or, you know, I was kind of concerned with the wheat harvest as well on that. So we got those taken care of. And so just the dark blue ones on your map is what we have finished. And Payment Pros is, they're looking at completing those roads in September timeframe, is kind of what they're thinking right now. Next, I'll move on to the bi-tuminate chip seal, and that is the green line on the map. We're under contract with Circle C Paving and Construction to do our bi-tuminate chip seal. I talked with Circle C, and they're, they've pushed this back from, you know, an early August to now a mid-September to start these projects. This, the chip seal program, we did have a couple change orders for this. And the first change order was we exchanged Niles Road, let's see if I can get the pointer. Yeah, right up here, so you got Niles Road north of Old Eighty-One. That one was scheduled to have a chip seal, but we removed that project, well, we exchanged it for Burma from Fallen Road south to the county line. We just felt that Burma was starting to get quite a few potholes this year. You know, when potholes decide to show up, you know, they don't come, you know, in singles. They usually come up in groups. So that road was really starting to get distressed. And so I think we made a decision, we better get that thing chip sealed before it gets any worse. We go through another winter. The other change order was there's two sections on Waterwell Road that I've talked with the commission about that in the past. And so it's, the first section is from the, on Waterwell Road, the Smoky Hill River Bridge to Holmes. And then from Simpson Road, west a half a mile, we eliminated the chip seal on those two half-mile sections. And that was mainly because of the condition of those roads. It, you know, a chip seal doesn't add any structural capacity to those roads, and where that roads add is we needed some structure added to it. So we decided not to chip seal that. I think that was it with the chip seal, so I'll move on to the hot mix asphalt patching and overlay. And those are the light blue lines on the map. We, Slink County's under contract with APAC Kansas for one million, seven hundred and sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty-two cents. Work is anticipated to start around mid-October on that. And we did have, or we do have one change order on that, and that is that the two sections on Waterwell Road that we removed from the chip seal, we added to the overlay project. And so we're going to add four and a half inches of asphalt on that section of road there. Okay, so now we have just road improvement projects, and these are more like upgrade projects. And that is the red line, the one red line on the map, and that is on Waterwell Road between Burma and Lightville. That project is a grating project with base construction and four and a half inches of hot mix pavement. Bids were open on July first, twenty nineteen. APAC Shares was the only bidder on that. And we've got scheduled to talk about how we want to proceed with this project in the study session. We, I did have a couple other red lines on a previously quarterly report on this project, or I'm sorry, on this map. The one was on Simpson Road from Waterwell Road to Magnolia. We did remove that project until we can kind of determine a project scope and a budget for that project. And then we had a couple projects that the county crews were going to upgrade, and this was more of a gravel road upgrade. So they're currently gravel roads, and the crews were going to get in there and elevate the road, add gravel, and reshape it and all that. But with all of the flooding going on, we just don't have the time or the materials to do that type of work. And that was on Simpson Road between Waterwell and Minner, and then on Holmes Road between North Street and Cloud Street. So as you can see on your map, you know, we took those projects off. Next, moving on to the capital improvement program that we're, we've got scheduled and having the budget. We haven't really, we haven't done much with that yet, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention that this is something that is something we want to get completed, and that is we need to update the lights in the engineering building and the traffic control building, as well as do some, a construction project on the bathroom in the traffic control building. And then the other twenty nineteen CIP project is the construction of a retaining, a concrete, reinforced concrete retaining wall around our fuel tanks. Right now, it's got an earth dam around that, and we want to replace that with a concrete. And so that's, that's kind of where we're at with our capital improvement. There's, of course, always more, but I just wanted to bring up the twenty nineteen projects. Miscellaneous items I wanted to bring up and kind of update the commission about is off-system, off-system bridge program through KDOT Bureau Local Projects. And so every year, the federal government tells KDOT that there needs to be so much money, federal money, spent on off-system. These are either local roads or minor collector roads for cities and counties. And I believe the number's around eight million dollars. And then this is really protected money that has to go to the locals. And so they had a call for projects, and I submitted the Minner, the Minner Road Bridge Project, which is, is the project east of Gibson Valley Road. I believe that project has been submitted several other times for this program and have not been selected. This, the existing bridge is the last fracture-critical bridge we have in the county, and so it would be good to get that project taken care of. However, they're using federal funds. If we are awarded, and if we do accept the funds, then there are a lot of requirements, you know, that's attached to these dollars. You know, and so it's a project that if we do get, you know, we're probably looking at a two to two and a half year timeframe before construction starts. You know, because there's a long approval process with this to get this going, so. And so that's something we can talk about if we are awarded some funds. We can talk about that later on. The other one is the bi-anal bridge inspections. Every two years, we have to inspect every drainage structure that's longer than twenty feet in the county. And so every two years, we have to do that. We do that in-house, and we're just now completing that process right now. The railroad crossings. I wanted to kind of give the board an update on that. I did call the Union Pacific the other day to talk about the railroad crossing on Country Club, as well as Simpson Road up there by, or Simpson and Old Highway Forty. I talked with, he is the track manager, I believe is his title. And so for the crossing on Country Club, the project has been designed. Materials have been ordered or purchased, and I think they might even have those in their warehouse right now. And so now they just have to get it scheduled to get constructed. And so they're looking at anywhere from six to eight weeks to get that project replaced. That's where they're at right now. However, the U.P. only has the east tracks. There's two sets of tracks there. One's the, the east set of tracks is owned by the U.P., and the north set of tracks is privately owned. And the U.P., I'm supposed to call them, I think it was on Thursday, this week's Thursday, because they were going to talk to Schuler and to see if they can, if those tracks are being used, because they would, an ideal situation is if we can remove those tracks out of the roadway. And we've only had one crossing.
I'm confused, Justin. I'm confused when you say an east set of tracks and a north set of tracks. I mean, those, those tracks run parallel to one another. Why wouldn't there be an east and a west?
I'm sorry, I probably misspoke there. Yeah, it's an east and a west. And so they, the U.P. owns the east set of tracks.
Yes.
And that's the one that they're going to replace the crossing. And now we have the west set of tracks that is privately owned, okay, by Schuler.
Do we even know if those are used?
Well, and that's what the U.P. is going to talk to Schuler about, because, and there's a switch. And the whole problem with those, with that crossing right there, is there's a switch that's partially in the road. So you've got moving parts in the roadway, and so that makes that crossing a lot more difficult to upgrade. I'm hoping, and I think the U.P. is hoping, that they'll allow them to remove that crossing. Because I guess there is another set of, there's another switch further on to the south that they do use, so.
Well, it sounds to me like we need to get Schuler involved in this, too. I mean, as we, as we move along in the process, because Schuler, I mean, if they don't okay the money that's going to be spent on fixing their portion of it, you know, it doesn't do us any good to fix the U.P.
Right, yeah. And this is a U.P. project. There's no local funds.
Right.
Being spent on this. But yeah, you're right. And it's, and the U.P., this Zach, who I've been, who I've been talking with there, they're going to contact Schuler and get them involved and see. And that's where I'm supposed to call the U.P. back on Thursday to ask them how that conversation went, and see how we're going to be forward.
Good. And I mean, if you don't hear from them by Thursday, I would suggest that you contact Schuler's, because we certainly got to get them on board. It needs to be done at the same time, not.
Oh, sure, yeah, no. And that's why the U.P. is contacting them, because they're wanting to do it, you know, do something with those tracks during their project. And they can just incorporate the whole thing into one big project.
And you're saying that you may hear from U.P. as early as Thursday?
I'm, Zach told me to call him Thursday. And Zach is actually very good at answering and returning calls. And so I'm pretty confident that I'll be talking to him by the end of the week.
Good deal.
So. And then the project on Simpson and Old Forty, you know, right now, there's a concrete crossing where the top of that crossing, the concrete spall off quite a bit, and there's exposed rebar, and it's rough. And they're, they're looking at, they're trying to determine whether they can patch it or completely replace it, or if they're going to need to completely replace it. They're hoping they can patch it. They said they've got a pretty, a good material to do that, that'll hold together well. But there's, they're, they've been aware of this project for a while. And they said they had a similar crossing on Santa Fe, as far as a similar condition-wise, and that they were able to patch it, and it worked well. So, but they are aware of it, and he wasn't sure when that was going to get, that project was going to get completed. But he'll, I'll probably have to just keep calling them, you know, having a routine phone call to them, just to get an update on that. The last thing that I had was the, and I've been working on the last couple days, is some mitigation projects with FEMA. And so we have to submit a letter of intent for these projects. And so what I've been working on is, there's a, one project is on Kingman Road, just northeast of City of Gyp, right there where it curves and goes on a bridge right there. And then the second one is Gibson Valley Road, just north of their bike system. I went there yesterday and took a bunch of pictures in the morning, and it's, it's, there's a lot of road damage there. And so with those two projects where, you know, we're, I'm going to submit a paving job, you know, so where we can get some asphalt pavement put on this, so we quit losing our road gravel. I haven't pulled up the reports yet, but part of my submittal is going to be how much money we spent on those two locations, you know, here in just the last few months. And I know we've rebuilt those roads several times. And so hopefully, those two, I think we've got a good chance of getting. The other two projects, those are where the river is really starting to erode the bank, stream bank, and it's starting to erode into the roadway. And so we're looking at a road realignment project. The first one is on Stimel, Stimel and Jasper, at that intersection. And then the other one is south of the intersection of Stimel and Cunningham.
Could you point those out for me, please?
I will do my best. Okay, so Stimel, Stimel and Jasper is about right there. I've had, it looks like I've had way too much coffee, how shaky my pointer is. And then Stimel and Cunningham is over in this area. That might have been it, right there. Yeah. Yeah, about in that area, right, right there. I think that's that road right there. And so I'm going to submit a roadway realignment, try to move the road away from that erosion. So we'll submit them, see if they get approved. Doesn't hurt to submit them, so that's kind of what we're going to, we're going to try, anyway.
Okay, I want to make the comment, going back to Simpson Road, the portion south of Magnolia that we redid last year. All the flooding, all the weather that we've had in the past few months, that road is in remarkable shape, which, which tells me that's, that's the area that we need to be leaning towards in redoing some of these roads, as opposed to, certainly as opposed to the chip seal. I mean, that road is, hasn't had a lot of maintenance required of it throughout all this weather process. So that's certainly, I mean, I'm preaching to the choir, I know that, you know, that, that process, you guys were right on how that should have been handled. And the restructuring of that road was handled in a proper manner.
Thank you. Thank you.
And it has held up well, and we need to continue that path.
It's all about getting rid of the water, you know, with a proper crown in the road.
Right.
The ditches cleaned and with proper grade, so we can get the water away from the road as fast as possible, that's the key.
Other comments or questions from Commissioners? Okay, thank you, Justin. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Good job.
That brings us to the end of today's agenda. Other business or announcements? I will say that I spent about three and a half hours last Friday night in the jail watching the process go there, from booking to, you know, corrections and in the pods, and it was a very informative time to, and time well spent on my part, I think, so. Any other questions or announcements or so forth from Commissioners? Not, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Been moved in second that we adjourn today's meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is adjourned, commission meeting is adjourned. We will have a second commission meeting immediately following.